Good evening. Welcome to this evening's Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority meeting. It is February the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at approximately seven P. M. We're gathered here in council chambers in the Centennial Building at twelve South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, our scheduled prayer won't occur, but we will have a prayer that I will give, and then followed by our flag salute. Please stand if you're able. Father, we thank you for this time that we have together to take up the affairs of our great city. We pray that you would give us wisdom and guide our actions. We ask, call us in your son's name. Amen.
For flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pelmore?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Selby?
Here.
Shriver?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
This evening, our presentation and proclamation will be deferred until the next meeting. At this time, we'll have our visitors' agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to the city of Yukon business. Do we have any visitors that would like to speak? Seeing no visitors, at this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority will take up the Yukon Municipal Authority Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pelmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll have a presentation on the scope of work to develop a city water supply plan by Cole Niblet from Garver LLC, who joins us via Zoom. Welcome, Cole. Welcome, Cole. Seeing that we have some technical difficulties, we will now, we'll take a recess as Yukon Municipal Authority and...
Can you hear?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. We may have Cole.
Yes, I can hear you guys.
Oh, there's Cole. Okay, very good. We'll continue with item two A. Cole, please go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, all right, very good. We lost audio on our end for a little bit, so it was silent there. But good evening, everyone. Glad to be here tonight and present to you. And just so I'm clear, was there a brief introduction given on the item and the...
I did not give any background there, Cole. Feel free to fill us in.
Okay, excellent. All right, well, council before us this evening is an agenda item to discuss a water supply evaluation for the city of Yukon. And so, tonight, give me one second here, Teams or Zoom isn't responding. Okay, great. So our goal tonight is to really just introduce you to the team and then review our process and proposed path forward for this water supply. So don't want to take too much of your time tonight. We'll briefly introduce that team and then spend most of our time in that second item, talking about the water supply evaluation process. So diving right in, our project team has prior experience on both your rate study and the Cowra Water Supply Study from several years ago, which several of you may be familiar with this, the Central Oklahoma Water Resource Authority. That project was an entity or a regional water entity interested in studying regional water supplies for central Oklahoma, including the communities of Yukon, Mustang, several others in the general area. And so, one thing we're really excited about on our team is that we executed that study for Cowra, and so, a lot of the same evaluations that we'll execute for your Yukon Water Supply Study are the exact same evaluations we went through for that Cowra Study. So this will really allow us to hit the ground running and really bring that previous experience forward to you and really produce a lot of efficiencies as it relates to evaluating your water demands, your water projections, evaluating all the water supply alternatives that we have to us over both the short and long-term period. So again, for any of you that I may not have been able to meet previously, my name is Cole Niblet. I lead our Oklahoma Water Team for Garver. I'll be your project manager and your project lead for this project. And that Cowra Study was actually one of the very first projects that I worked on at Garver, and so it was really in the trenches evaluating both Yukon and all the other Cowra member cities, water demand projections, water supply alternatives, cost estimates, all those good things that go into a water supply plan. And so, I'm really excited to be able to bring that experience back from one of my very first projects to you as part of this Yukon Study. Second, Joseph Delaley is one of our master planning team leads at Garver. That's kind of his specialty and one of the things he spends most of his time doing is executing master plans just like this. So Joseph also worked alongside me on that Cowra Study, and so Joseph is going to be one of the key players on this project as well. And then also, we have Michael Nguyen from our local office. He's on the Zoom call with us tonight. He'll be a deputy project manager, helping me execute this project. And several of you may have met Michael through the rate study that we executed several months ago. Michael was instrumental in that effort, and so we're going to leverage his experience as well in helping to execute this Yukon Water Supply Study. So with that, let me dive into this water supply evaluation process. And really, when we talk about this process tonight, essentially what we're doing is walking through the major tasks of the work order that is before you for consideration tonight. So as a whole, I'm going to talk about water supply evaluations and this general process. And when you review our work order, the work order is actually laid out in a very similar format with the same exact tasks that we're talking about tonight. So when we sit down to do a water supply evaluation like this, we work through four main tasks, and all these tasks really build on each other as we move through the process. So the terms you'll hear me talk about tonight are Task One, baseline development; Task Two, existing system assessment; moving into alternatives evaluation; and then finally, an overall plan development or water supply plan development. And so, you can see these tasks really set the stage and build upon each other as we work through this. And so, I'll talk through these each in a bit more detail in a few slides, but key point here, or another key point I want to make here, is that at the culmination of each of these tasks, we really believe in coming back, sitting down and working through a major workshop with city staff to really build your involvement with this study, make sure you're seeing the information as it's developed, and really getting your input as we work through this process. And so, you'll see that denoted on the figure here. We are proposing several major workshops at the culmination of that Task Number Two, existing system assessment. We'll come back again after we work through preliminary alternatives evaluation, and then we'll have another workshop at the end of this, after we have kind of a feasible plan all rolled up into one set of projects or phased set of improvements. And so, let's talk through these in a bit more detail. Baseline development, first off, Task Number One. And when we say baseline development, we really mean tasks like water demand projections where we establish the needs for the next twenty and fifty-year planning horizons. And so, one of the key tasks we'll do as part of the baseline development is develop water demand curves. And so, that, we're seeing example of that on the screen here, showing you water demand in million gallons per day on the vertical axis across the timeline in years and horizontal. And so, this was actually a graph we produced for that Cowra Study. And so, what you're seeing are two lines, a blue line for projected average daily water demand, so the annual average water consumption on any given day of the year, and a red line denoting what was projected as a maximum day demand. So what are those peak demands we use during the heat of summer, when irrigation demands are highest, people are filling their pools, so on and so forth? And so, this is one of the key fundamental exercises that we'll work through, and this is really important in establishing, okay, what is the volume of water that we need to plan for? What does our infrastructure actually need to deliver over a long, you know, over the course of twenty, fifty years? We work through this process using evaluating historical trends, population projections, your historical water demand. We'll go through a robust evaluation of things like that to develop some of these baseline development criteria. Moving forward from there, we move into the existing system assessment, Task Number Two. And really, that, this task evaluates those future demands against your existing infrastructure capacities. And so, really what this allows us to create is a gap analysis. We know what we need to produce or what demands we need to satisfy over the next twenty-plus years, and then we look at the existing system and say, okay, what can that system, what can that infrastructure provide, and what are those gaps that we need to fill in? And so, as an example, again, showing you that same or bringing forward a similar water demand curve here, we'll compare your projected water demands to things like your allocated water rights. And so, as an example, Yukon currently leases some water rights in the Garver Wellington for the existing wellfield, and so we'll look at existing water rights that either are currently available to the city or what may be available to procure in the future, as well as looking at the actual infrastructure. So your pipeline diameters, your pumping systems, your elevated storage towers, things like that, what can the actual infrastructure in the ground support over a long period of time, and what improvements might be needed to bolster that infrastructure over the next several decades? Okay, so moving forward to Task Number Three, Alternatives Evaluation. And when we work through these alternatives evaluations, we're looking at really any viable option that we can use to meet those capacity gaps after that gap analysis. And so, one of the major focuses of this study will be to sit down and look at the projected demands, look at what the existing system can provide, and then, okay, let's develop a long list of alternatives that we can then screen out to identify what is the most feasible. And so, we'll look at things like expanding your existing wellfield in the Garver Wellington. We'll consider additional or new groundwater supplies, maybe there are alternative aquifers nearby that we can utilize to expand a new groundwater supply and meet water demands. We'll also look at surface water, potential surface water alternatives, whether that's, you know, North Canadian River, other surface reservoirs in the region that could potentially provide a long-term supply for Yukon. And then, we like to be creative and at least screen out whether it's, you know, we'll work through initial feasibility, but keep kind of out-of-the-box ideas on the table such as potable reuse or non-potable reuse to offset potable water demands, you know, reusing our wastewater as potential water supply, in that water supply portfolio, rather. And so, we'll sit down and develop a long list of alternatives that we'll then screen out and hopefully identify or will work towards a short list of more feasible projects. And that really segues into Task Number Four, which is developing that plan, developing a master plan path forward. And so, that plan will combine preferred alternatives into one single plan with phasing as needed to make this more feasible over time. And so, an example of this, how this might look forward, or again, using the Cowra example just because it's relevant to Yukon and been discussed in the past with this council, we can look at things like how can we develop interim water supply solutions in the meantime and slowly either reduce, you know, OKC water usage or slowly grow other portions of our water supply portfolio. So again, showing you an example of what this might look like with the demand curve on the screen. For the Cowra example, the blue line represented slowly adding additional groundwater capacity year by year, and you'll see that that blue line increasing over time as the Cowra solution was proposed to, you know, drill and expand that groundwater supply, and eventually incrementally reduce the OKC usage, you know, commensurate to whatever water supply was added year by year. And so, we'll look at a very similar process for Yukon. What are some of those short-term wins we can gain from a water supply perspective versus what might be a longer-term, you know, slower burn as far as some longer-term water supply alternatives as well? Oh, sorry, I'll pause there. Was there a question?
No questions yet on our side, Cole.
Okay, very good. All right. And then, another key part of that plan that we'll keep front of mind is developing a phased plan or a set of demand triggers that allows us to put together a plan that balances your capital expenditures with the actual demands you see in the system. And so, one of the things we really take a close look at in a water supply plan like this is putting together a plan that you can implement, hopefully in a phased approach, or at least implement that plan as the demands out in the system actually dictate it. And so, once your infrastructure demands hit a certain threshold, we have a plan in place for you to go execute that next project or that next wellfield expansion, whatever that may be, to meet those demands over time. And so, we'll put together capital outlay schedules, which is an example of one we're looking at on the screen here. Once we identify that short list and the preferred path forward, we'll put that into an actual, you know, cash flow scenario to give you an idea of how best you can fund that. Do we need to defer certain improvements to future time horizons to make the financing strategy a bit more feasible? And so, those are all things we'll look at as well when we sit down and develop that overall plan development. And so, that is generally an overview of the process. And so, my final slide here is just an overview of the project schedule. And so, you'll see in the work order, our milestones are built off of a few key workshops that we talked about earlier on in the first two rows there. You can see from, we'll develop a list of requested data and get, again, get all the data we need to go through those water consumption and population projection evaluations. And so, ninety days from receipt of that requested data, we'll round up and have our first major workshop for that baseline development task. Hundred twenty days from that point, we'll round back up for another workshop focused on those plan alternatives, again, looking at groundwater, surface water, what alternatives are out there and what are the associated costs and infrastructure needs, and discuss those in a workshop. And once we get through that, build your confidence in that and gain or get comments from you during that process, sixty days from that point, we'll then deliver you a draft water supply plan report. That'll be a more, you know, robust report, very detailed, and you guys can read through that, provide comments, and then from that point, we'll circle up for a final workshop where we review those comments, fine-tune that water supply plan report, and then at that point, we'll finalize that report and then come back to city council for final presentations and approvals at that point. So it's a general overview of the schedule there. And those are the planned slides I had, so I'll open it up for any questions you all might have on any of the content we just covered here.
This is Shelley Selby. I was a part of Cowra when it was around, and what I remember was there weren't a lot of alternatives, there weren't a lot of supply. One of the things that was mentioned during that time was how to remove the arsenic, and Mustang did buy equipment to remove the arsenic, but I talked to them last week, and it was not cost-efficient. So how is this going to be different than during the days of Cowra?
So the, you know, one of the major challenges with Cowra was the amount of stakeholders involved in that solution. Getting that many entities to coordinate, sell, or, you know, partially fund and all come together for a single solution that may take certain communities years and years before they actually saw a drop of water. That was a major challenge with Cowra. I think one of the things that are, one of the challenges that will be less with Yukon looking on its own here are smaller investments in the infrastructure to, for example, treat for arsenic. You know, we developed concepts for what it would look like to develop an arsenic treatment plant for Yukon alone as part of that Cowra report, and that's one thing obviously we'll update as part of this process. And the costs associated with that and the feasibility are much more, I'll say, affordable when you're just focusing on the volumes and the infrastructure needed just for the city of Yukon without, you know, the additional, you know, ten water entities that could have potentially been involved with Cowra. Does that help on that question?
Kind of. I just remember that none of it was workable for us. And like I said, Mustang did do the arsenic removal, but just don't feel like it was a good bang for their buck. So, yeah, I look forward to that.
And the other, the other thing I would say, and specifically on arsenic removal, you know, technological advances have helped the unit cost for arsenic treatment. They're, and Garver's piloted several of these technologies similar to what Mustang installed. And there's several options on the market, and we agree, some are, some are better than others, of course, and so I would say that's another thing that has kind of been brought to the marketplace that maybe wasn't quite as present during the Cowra days.
Okay, thank you.
I think the work that you guys are starting here, Cole, is very commendable. I think the initiative that our city manager, Mike Castro, took to engage you all is really helpful. I like to say that the best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago. Second-best time is now, and the second thing I would say is the things that make us civilized are things like being able to flush our toilet, being able to turn on our faucet. Civilization breaks down when those very basic services in a denser urban environment are not sustainable. So as you guys engage in that work, the one thing I would ask, and maybe our city manager, Mike Castro, could explore with you, Cole, and with your team, is at each of the, after each of those workshops, after the city staff has engaged with you guys and have reviewed all the assumptions and the outputs from those key points, do you guys think it would be possible, not a big report out, but just a one-page summary, hey, here's the assumptions that we agreed upon with city staff, and here's the output at each of those, I think you had four or five, you know, checkpoints? Because I think the council, we as the council, would really like to see that work as it goes on, and it's really, I mean, I do think that you're, there was a lot of good work with Cowra, but the multi-stakeholders and decision-makers made it very difficult to move things forward, and in this case, we have more of a unilateral decision-making apparatus with the council, and I'd like to bring us along for the ride.
Absolutely. That's easily done, and we prefer that as well. When we can work with you to build your confidence as we're developing the plan, those are the most successful projects. I don't want to start this project and run away and then send you a report six months later with a lot of information that you've never seen. So that's how we like to operate, and absolutely, we'll get you those reports out.
Good. Any other comments? Thank you so much, Cole, and your whole team.
Yes, sir. Thank you, council.
At this time, we'll consider a motion approving Budget Amendment Number twenty twenty-five dash zero-two to increase appropriations and revenue for Garver Engineering Water Source Plan in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I did call today or emailed our city manager that this is going to come from our increased water fees. Once again, we keep budgeting things with our proposed interest we're going to get, our proposed water fee increase that we're going to get. I just think we're counting a lot of chickens before they hatch. I agree it's needed, but again, we're over budget.
I think we'll get an update on where we are against budget by department, but we have counted the chickens. There's approximately fifty million chickens in the bank account, and we plan to spend it to make our city sustainable and deliver services to our wonderful residents.
Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
No.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pelmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion approving Contract Amendment Number One to the Garver Master Agreement to include the Yukon Municipal Authority. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Pelmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving a motion, consider a motion approving Work Order Number Two to the Master Agreement for Professional Services with Garver LLC in the amount of a hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety dollars. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, this was, is this coming out of next year's budget, is what I understood?
This is the total amount for the Garver engagement, everything that Cole outlined this evening, all four or five steps. The amount that we anticipate being spent this year was the first amount that was highlighted there of sixty-five thousand. The hundred fifty-eight, the difference of whatever we spend this year will be budgeted into next year.
So it'll be ninety-three thousand, but that'll come out of next year's budget.
Depending on the progress that we make this year.
Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pelmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion approving the bid and entering into a contract with Lone Star Tactical Buildings LLC in the amount of four hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and eleven cents, with reimbursement of two hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-seven cents from an OEM grant, and authorizing Brewer Construction LLC to perform concrete work around the training facility in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, using the twenty-twenty-three Yukon concrete asphalt paving with drainage, water, and sewer contract for a total, with a total project cost not to exceed six hundred and thirty-thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eleven cents. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
For those keeping score, this comes out of the pest account, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pelmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. We'll take, similarly, we'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February fourth, twenty twenty-four, payment of material claims in the amount of one million six hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents, designated the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pelmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll have reports from city officials, beginning with an update on wastewater treatment plant provided, and the, as well as the on-call bids for water and sewer contracts and concrete asphalt paving contracts by city engineer Robbie Williams. Go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. So I believe you should have a handout in front of you. So we had our pre-work meeting on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and we had a good meeting with the contractor, and then they supplied us a schedule. So what I did is I just took the key dates for the schedule. So basically, we're in the submittal review process. I've received fifteen submittals in the last three days. We'll be receiving a few more over the next few months. Currently, they're going to mobilize on June second, and the first thing they're going to do is they're going to start the new splitter box, and that's so that we can divert the flow from the aeration basin to our three clarifiers. And then you can see Clarifier Number Two, they'll start September ninth. That will take about nine months due to the work they have to do in the lead time on receiving the clarifier equipment. And then, the beginning of January of next year, they will work on the headworks installing the influent pumps, and then they will provide the electrical to the existing blower building to accommodate the three new three-hundred horsepower blowers we'll have in the future. Right now, this schedule takes up the complete contract time. That's the way the contractor wanted to start this, but he told us at the pre-work meeting that they hope to finish well ahead of the schedule. So we'll just keep you advised as we go.
Thank you. Any questions about the water treatment plan, schedule, and progress to date? Thank you. Any questions about the water treatment plan, schedule and progress to date? Thank you, Robbie. Move on to the, the contract, uh, bids?
Yes, sir. We'll start with the on-call concrete and asphalt paving and storm sewer project. And what, we'll, we'll start at the, uh, the bottom, the plan holders list. As I told you, you know, we had given the specifications to four plan rooms. And then the companies listed below, there's six of them. They, they were actually on the plan holders list. Uh, and then, and then from, from there, we ended up with, uh, at the mandatory pre-bid meeting for the on-call asphalt and concrete, we had, uh, it's actually on the on-call water and sewer project. We had Redlands Contracting, Allroad, Schwartz, SAC, Craft, Brewer and Haskell. So we actually had seven companies attend the, uh, pre-bid meeting. But, but of those, we only had one bid received and that was Schwartz Paving for the one million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And then my engineer's estimate is below that. So we only received one bid, but we still, you know, we went through the entire process. We were hoping to get more bids. I talked to one company, uh, they indicated this was just not their type of work. I talked to a couple of others and with their workload, uh, they just didn't feel like they could perform for the city of, uh, Yukon.
A lot of this remind me today Brewer has under one, I mean, the, these contracts were split recently, but before they were together. And Brewer holds that and they ha- they have cap- capacity and cap- or I should say capability. I don't know about capacity. They have capability to perform this work, right, on concrete asphalt paving work? I mean, they're doing a lot of it.
Yeah, uh, so we require like the Schwartz paving bid, uh, we require companies to list their subcontractors. So on this project, Schwartz took the lead on the paving and Brewer is listed as one of their subcontractors to, uh, perform storm sewer work.
Okay. Yeah, it's just disappointing that we didn't get more bids there. Okay.
We tried. I thought we would at least have one, one additional bid. But after they went through the specifications and they just didn't feel like it was, uh, the type of work their company does.
Any other question, any other questions on the concrete asphalt paving storm sewer project? Go ahead on the on-call water and sewer project there, Robbie.
Hey, let me just pull up something. So again, on this one, we sent the, uh, to four plan rooms. Uh, we had seven contractors on the, uh, plan holders list that, that were all pre-qualified. And of that, we had three attend the mandatory pre-bid meeting. Craft Reynolds, Southwest Water Works and Brewer Construction. And again, we only received one bid. Uh, Craft Reynolds, they're more of a sanitary sewer contractor. Uh, so they did provide, they were there to provide pricing for sanitary sewer. They, they specialize in pipe bursting. Uh, so they, they are actually a part of Brewer's bid. I talked to Southwest Water Works. Uh, they primarily do water lines. They do some sewer. Uh, they told me that their current workload for the next year, uh, they are, they are just tied up. And they also have a similar contract with the city of Oklahoma City that's on call. So again, we just, we ended up with one, one bid.
Any questions on this? Thank you, Robbie.
All right. Thank you, sir.
At this time, we'll have a report from, uh, HR Director Cindy Shivers regarding the posting, uh, and hiring process for a finance director. Hi Cindy.
Good evening. Um, we, um, I worked with Mr. Castro on, uh, developing a job description for that position and a flyer and we got that posted on January the twenty-eighth. Um, we posted it with, um, the, um, OMMS, which has combined with the city managers organization. And so they have a, they have a pretty robust job board. Um, the, uh, Oklahoma Municipal League as well. Um, also the Texas Municipal League, um, Oklahoma Clerks and Troopers Organization. And then as part of our, um, website, we do have, uh, we do have, it's called governmentjobs.com and it's a nationwide search. And we've got it on there and as well as our LinkedIn page, uh, which has been very active. Um, we currently have, um, ten applicants as of this morning, nine of them, um, from the metro area, um, and one from out of state. Um, currently the position, uh, we have slated to end, um, the job posting to close on February twenty-seventh. Uh, Mr. Castro and myself will review that at that time to see if we're satisfied with the amount of applicants that we've received.
Any questions on this?
I realize we need to hire this. Are we still though in the other section, still doing a hiring freeze?
Yes.
Okay. If we have fifteen billion chickens, we ought to reconsider that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Here.
Now I'm gonna, now have an update on creating and implementation of policies and procedures following resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero-one by city manager Mike Castro.
Mayor, I'll jump right into it. Um, staff has been tasked to respond to the NAFRA resolution as we colloquially call it. And we have dug right in. So I wanted to give you a little bit of background, then Mitchell will come up and talk about the actual specific updates on policies and procedures. I'll give the overview and then I'll follow up Mitchell's presentation with a slide or two on coming attractions and what's coming down the pipeline. Uh, so let me begin with this, uh, a, a couple of points that I want to make in terms of our organization for the effort as a staff. Um, this is a total team effort. We have a lot of staff members involved in this and I want to leave you with the impression that it's not just, um, you know, the holy trinity of the city manager, the assistant city manager and the assistant to the city manager. This is really a lot of people, a lot of the department heads that are involved and people beyond that, uh, that are involved in this, uh, in this effort. We will actually be meeting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock as is our custom now. We meet at ten o'clock on Wednesdays and those usually go well into the lunch hour to discuss updates. We have divided it up. There were thirteen, uh, sections, uh, in the NAFRA resolution. We have divided that up and, uh, we have leads for each one of those sections. For example, I am leading the governance section. So that's my baby and I'm responsible for that portion of the resolution. As I mentioned before, we do the weekly internal updates where we sit down as a group over at the fire department and we talk through where we are in terms of our individual pros- process, individual progress. If we have questions for the group as a whole, we'll go through and talk about that. Mitch gives an update on the overall progress that we are seeing. So it's a very comprehensive update that we do on a weekly basis as a larger group. Our emphasis is on quality. Uh, we realize these are gonna be long-term documents. And we want to make sure that the documents that we are producing will stand the test of time. Um, and we are reviewing, as we go out and look at what other cities are doing or what O-MAG has available. Well, one of the thoughts that we have in the back of our mind is, is this applicable to the resolution? You know, is this germane to the issues that we have in front of us and is it addressing in a very specific sense, um, what we seek to fix? So that's the organization. A little bit more about some of the guidelines that I've personally want to see happen. These are again, long-term documents and policies. Um, these are generational documents. Documents that we produce will last fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. A- and I say that not to exaggerate. I specifically remember personal policies that I wrote in my first city, uh, Garden Ridge in San Antonio, twenty-eight years ago. So these are policies that again, a long time from now, people will look at these policies. Use the existing resources. It does not make sense to reinvent the wheel if we don't have to, but again, we're looking for quality. Um, comprehensive reviews and we are tracking our expenses. So we want to make sure that we're keeping the, keep an eye on the expenses that we have for this. Uh, Mitch is gonna come up here and give an update on the, uh, specific sections. So I will hand it over. Pass you the clicker.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
With the instructions from Gary, that moves it forward, that moves it.
Okay. Okay, we, we want to talk about documents and stuff as we move forward and what we're working on. A lot of these documents in rough draft form. Uh, so we'll start in the sections that I'm gonna talk about is like section, uh, one, internal controls and policies. We've got two draft documents we're working on, internal controls and segregation of duties. Uh, on section two, bank reconciliation and financial reporting. Uh, you know, we are working on a couple of documents here as well. One of them is a formal bank reconc- reconciliation policy and procedures. Timeline of monthly reporting to city council and monthly policy for department heads. So like I said, we're working on a lot of policies that we'll be discussing here. Like section three ordinance, qualification and compliance. One of the things that we found with our current, uh, provider, they have some opportunities there. We're gonna look at some software. It has an agenda creation, collaboration and with it also has integrated qualification. So basically we're working in the software when we're doing that. So that is something we have kind of noticed, but we're looking into. So we'll be talking about that as we move forward. So that is one of the things that was very, you know, concerning to, you know, the audit. So we want to talk to you about that. Budgeting and funding transfer policies. We got two policies there. We're working on funds transfer policy. And then we have the budget amendment policy that we're working on. Uh, miss, section five misuse of city assets and personnel. This one, uh, we, uh, are looking at some options of boarding in the personnel manual as well as some other things. Vehicle fuel usage and tracking, we're looking at that too as well and maybe GPS tracking. Uh, Arnold's been working on that. We're talking about our keyed system and different keys and, uh, limits. So we are looking at that to make sure that there is no issues as we move forward, but we will be bringing that stuff and let you know where we're at and how we're implementing it. Uh, section seven procurement bidding practices, vending management and accounts payable. We've got a couple of items here and action items. Mandatory bidding processing vendor management enhancements. Uh, you know, we're working on a policy for that. And also I'm gonna take credit for some of the stuff that we're doing, like the splitting of the contracts for our on-call. Those are two items, you know, we've split that. So that's an action item that we're actually doing. And then if you approve it tonight, there's an RFQ for engineering services with engagement to start July first. So that would be one of the items. So like I said, I'm taking credit for that. Uh, section eight, human resources.
Where'd section six go?
We're working, uh, the ones that I actually got policies on is the ones I'm talking to tonight. Uh, there's a lot of policies that we're working on and like I said, we're trying to figure out once we create those, are they separate policies or did they come into one policy? Because there's a lot of them that cross lines and stuff. So I think they're messing with us.
Those IT guys, you can, you can straighten them out tomorrow.
Oh, I'm going to. Human, human resources and payroll, uh, uh, regulations. Uh, we're working on several documents. There's a code of conduct, uh, ethics statement and non-discrimination and anti-arrestment policy and complaint procedures. Uh, also tonight you have an item on there for consulting services for limited payroll follow-up for the, from the audit. So like I said, we'll take credit for that too as well because that's an actual action item. Uh, hotline, ethics hotline, uh, of course, you know, we have purchased the software. We're working on that. Uh, with that, we're doing a draft hotline policy instructions under review. Uh, lighthouse web submission page completed, finalizing the last few questions aligning with Yukon policies. We're trying to make sure they're across lines with other departments, other things. So we're making sure that the verbiage is the same and carries throughout. Uh, also lighthouse preparing custom notification posters and training video. Uh, CMS data, database for administration investigation complete. Tests have been submitted by staff and appear to be working. So we have been working with that. Website link hotline, toll-free number, email, email, fax and mobile app options are set up, ready to launch once training is complete. Staff implementation, education, training and notification will start soon on that. As we move forward, we'll talk about IT governance and security. There's quite a few items there that, uh, are in the process. Uh, badge logging, uh, that is one of the concerns, the facilities that currently have logging capabilities or badge entry. We have figured out that we can download that information within a year. And so we'll keep that into a report and keep that downloaded. Now with the police department, their system does not do that, but they're in the process of updating all their systems to address that. Uh, also logging, log-out, timestamp logging for user solutions in place and working. Uh, network activity logs, researching solutions, critical actions, edits, deletions and applications including laser fish, laser fish, they're half completed. We're gonna conduct an IT audit by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, scheduled last week of June. Budget for the annual audit, audits for July first, twenty-twenty-five. Solution in place scheduled to begin. Uh, phishing threats scheduled to begin. We actually have, uh, IT has set up, uh, Gary has, a committee group of members from several departments, uh, that will start reviewing these policies and make recommendations as well. Uh, with the police being different and a different system, we just did this with the general employees. Cause their system's a lot different and then them being able to, uh, discuss and act upon their systems, we felt wasn't appropriate. So we pulled those into a separate department. Uh, section thirteen, implementation oversight. Uh, the manager actually has provided his document for review. So we're in the process of reviewing that. And so that is kind of the items that we've hit on so far. Uh, hopefully within the next several weeks, we'll be finalizing some documents. We're gonna put them into a technical review to make sure they're written into a technical format. So.
Thank you, Mitchell.
It's always the IT people. Some coming attractions. Uh, training will now become the main effort as we start to roll through these policies and adopt these policies and refine and get the final drafts on these policies. We will very quickly move into training mode. Commitment to transparency, we will be back in front of council every month at the second meeting to talk about this and give you the updates that, uh, are called for in the resolution. So this will become a regular fixture of our, uh, of our meetings. A- and the other thing that, that we're kind of keyed in on is as we go through and look at these very comprehensive, um, thirty thousand foot looks at the city, we're gonna find other areas that we need to take action on. Uh, there will be, the list will grow from one hundred and fifty-four items to something greater than that. A- and so we anticipate coming back to you with other items that we're going to, uh, look at. And again, we'll be speaking with you about that in the coming months. I've identified some issues, um, and I'm sure the department says they go through. Gary will identify some issues. We'll all have some additional projects that we need to work on. Uh, we won't lose sight of what we need to do and that's to address the resolution. That's the priority, but there will be some other items in the future. So a quick summary, uh, as I said before, this is a team effort. And, uh, we are spending a lot of man-hours on this. It's an effort that is directed correctly, uh, but it is a significant effort from a staff perspective. I'm taking department heads and sucking out about four or six hours a week out of their time to work on this. So it's a pretty significant, uh, significant effort. I just want you to have that impression and be aware of that. Uh, we are results oriented and our eye is long-term. As I said before- Uh, we are results oriented and our eye is long-term. As I said before, these are policies that will be here for many, many years, if not decades to come. And we want to get it right. And the last note there is, uh, we're off to a quick start. We're doing good. The department heads take this seriously. Everybody is taking it seriously. We're putting in some, some fairly significant time and effort on this. And I think you should be satisfied with the effort. Realize we always want more, but, uh, there's a lot that's gone in to get us to this point, and there is more to come. Mayor subject your questions. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Mike, I want to thank you for doing this and putting all this together, you and the Holy Trinity as you call yourselves. Jason, are you going to come speak at all? Or are we just going to hear two-thirds of the Holy Trinity? Okay. No, I appreciate it. You're doing a great job.
Thanks, sir.
I think.
It's the team effort.
Yeah, the team.
It's the folks behind me.
All the department directors and their teams are really, really well experienced. And I'm glad that they're doing heavy lifting, you know, to get all these items across the finish line. And I think it's really going to be in good shape, you know, come the end of this calendar year when everything's, everything's, uh, wrapped up.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Now we'll have an update on Hillcrest Park Playground additions by Parks and Rec Director Ryan McClure.
Good evening. I, I gave the notice to proceed to Happy Playgrounds on February first, uh, so a few weeks ago on that to install a playground at Hillcrest. Uh, unfortunately, there is a bit of a delay on the project, uh, due to a couple of reasons that I want to share with you. The reason i- is due to safety, so they are now considering the project to be a custom build rather than a kind of a pre-established playground, uh, which they were not anticipating initially when we had the conversations with them. Uh, what this means is, um, that the, the combination elements, which are the, the junior monkey bars, the regular monkey bars, uh, the horizontal bars, kind of that structure, uh, that's part of the playground, uh, is a custom build. And, and that's why it's considered a custom build. Uh, so it's, it's a safety purpose. And because of that, now they're having to go through their CAD team, uh, in order to make sure that it's safe, in order to make sure that it's up to ASTM standards, that it's up to I P E M A safety requirements as well. Uh, so that's where we are in the process is, uh, there with their CAD group. I've asked for an update on that. They are anticipating that hopefully tomorrow they'll be able to, to finish that. And then hopefully have, uh, an updated timeline for us on Thursday of this week is, is what they're hoping to do. Uh, so that's where we are with that. Um, that's kind of the first reason. The second reason they gave is that there is a major increase in sales of playgrounds currently. And that's called, caused a little bit of a smaller delay than, than more so what the, uh, the custom side of it is causing. Uh, so what they've said to me is that that pre-built model would be a, a three to four week ship time, whereas the custom build would be more of a five to eight week ship time. So, um, like I said, it's, it's in CAD approval right now. Um, hopefully we'll know something this week and I'll be able to give an update on that timeline with that. And what I will say is we are pushing them on as quickly as possible with that project. Um, and they have assured me that they are pushing the project along as quickly as they can as well. I have asked them, since it's a custom build, is there an increased cost for that? And they have assured me that that is not the case. And I'm open to any questions.
Really good progress. I appreciate your work and the, the Parks Board as well. I know that you've been updating them and they've been very helpful. I've, I've enjoyed watching those meetings and, uh, staying apprised of those steps, I guess.
Thank you.
Now we'll have a report on city finances by City Treasurer Kristen Reide.
Good evening. All right, so I'm going to get, I'm going to give you an update on the summary of the financials from January twenty twenty-five. Um, this first slide just gives an update of our summary bank account balances by fund. Um, as you can see, we keep about the same, uh, give or take balance, um, total in these accounts. I also put, um, on, uh, this shows the last five months. And I also put at the bottom the total interest earned over the past five months on the, um, on all the CDs and the bank accounts. So that includes, um, interest paid out to checking and the capitalized interest as well on our investments and our bank accounts. Um, we had a little bit of a drop, well, a pretty big drop, um, during the, um, RFP between, uh, October and November. Um, and so now that we've pretty much completed our transition to Bank of Oklahoma, we are back up to, um, having about ninety-five to a hundred thousand dollars a month in interest on these accounts.
Are most, most of these operating funds, Kristen, are placed with our primary banking provider?
Um, yes, we've got ma- um, mainly everything transferred over. We had to keep some money in the Y and B to cover the outstanding checks, um, that we have, but pretty much everything, that's just the money that's still in the Y and B. And everything's been transferred pretty much to be okay.
And then when we look at, um, when we look at the, uh, general fund, is general fund reserves, is that the rainy day fund? Or that, that's a Yukon Reserve Fund? Which, or is it both?
Yeah, fund, the general fund reserves is the, um.
Rainy day funds.
Yeah, the rainy day fund.
So with that increase there, will some of that be placed in CDs in, in coming weeks, you think?
Um, we've actually got those in, uh, what we call, in accounts where we can move them over to their I C S accounts. And we move them over, we can transfer them in their liquid. And so when we need the money, we can transfer them back. So they're invested at about around four point two five percent. So we can, um, this includes the, the amounts in the, like, demand deposit and the I C S accounts. So this is the total.
Okay. And then the sinking fund, uh, will that, will those funds be re, will those funds be invested in some kind of instrument that's a little higher yielding than just the sweep accounts?
Um, yes, the sinking fund is at Bank, uh, Bank First and, or, yeah, and that's actually a sweep account. So we're earning pretty good interest on that.
Pretty good interest. Okay, thank you.
All right. So this next slide shows the CD balances of by fund. Um, so we've got, uh, most of our CDs are pool cash funds. So when we get, um, the interest on those, those are credited to the general fund. When we, uh, receive interest on the Yukon Reserve Fund, those go back into that account. And so those are reserved for use based on whatever the ordinance says. So the, the meter deposits fund and the reserve fund are basically restricted for use by the ordinance, what the ordinance says, so, um, on those.
Thank you.
All right. So next is the detail of, this is the total sales tax collections. Um, so what happens is every month we get a deposit. And as you can see on the left, we get a deposit like in July. And those reflect May and June, uh, receipts. And so this is basically a three-year, um, history of what we received in sales tax by, um, you know, by month for the last three years. Our year-to-date total is about eighteen point eight, uh, million. We still have about a year-to-date shortfall of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, um, in, in collections. And this is down about four point zero three percent from last year. And this slide does show the total collections. And so what happens is once we get the total deposit, we split that up, uh, based on, um, the next slide here. And it's split up into, so two cents of that goes into the general fund. And then the rest of it's split up into, um, different funds. And those, those different funds are basically used for capital improvements, uh, debt service. And so those are not, those are more restricted funds. So, um, I just wanted you to see like the to- the total breakout, the total amount we get, and then the breakout after we get that, what's distributed to each of the funds after that. Um, next is use tax. Uh, again, it's the same kind of format, so we get that once a month. And the use tax is four cents, and this, these reflect the total collections. Uh, we're, year-to-date, we have a total of about three million. We've got an increase this year of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So we're up on use tax about ten point two, uh, four percent from last year. This is probably due to the transition to a lot of people buying more online rather than brick and mortar stores. And the way this is split is three cents goes to the general fund and one cent of this goes to a reserve fund. Oh, sorry, I don't know why that didn't pull up, but it, it, it goes to the capital improvement and the, the one cent goes to the capital improvement fund. The nineteen ninety-six capital improvement fund, so. And that's restricted for, uh, debt service and capital improvement, so. And, um, another main source of revenue in the general fund is gas and tobacco taxes. Again, safe formats. Uh, these generally have stayed pretty much the same. Tobacco, uh, collections have decreased a little bit.
I'm always happy to see that one decrease. When I see it go down, I'm like, good job, people.
Yeah, that's good. Um, but, but the gas generally stays the same. And so all of these go to the general fund. And here's summary of franchise fees in the general fund. And this, uh, reflects year-to-date through January twenty twenty-five. So we're about fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year done. We've got electrical franchise, telephone franchise, natural gas and cable. So as you can see, we've got the current budget, um, the totals for the period, the year-to-date actual, and where we are on the percent of where we budgeted. We're pretty much in line. The, um, only, the big oddity is the telephone franchise. We get a big payment in June of the, it basically at the end of the year for the telephone franchise tax. So, um, that's why that's down. And this varies, you know, month to month based on, you know, weather and what they collect. It's, it's different for each franchise, what the percent of the gross, uh, what percent they send us of the gross receipts they get. So the next slide is a revenue summary by type of the general fund. As you can see, we've got sales tax, franchise fees, license and permits, fines and forfeitures, uh, use of property and special revenues and transfers. So we're, uh, doing, for sales tax, we're about, uh, right on for the year. We're at fifty-eight percent. Um, and as you can see, this number, this, uh, one point six million is reflected of the amount that ends up in the general fund after we receive the full amount of taxes. Again, we're a little bit down for the year in franchise, and that's probably due to that telephone. Next slide is a general fund expenditure summary by department. This just gives a listing of where the departments are based on their budget. I've got listed the current period for January, where they are year-to-date and their budget balance, and the percent of budget that each department has reached for the year. Um, the main, just, um, things that stand out on this one is technology is, the budget's pretty front-loaded. So a lot of their expenditures come out at the beginning of the year. And also legislative, we have some encumbrances for some consultant fees that may extend into the next year. So we're really, we're really on, on budget. It just, we've got an encumbrance that might be voided at the end of the year. And so we're really in line with that.
That's that wastewater treatment plant expenditure and the engineering fees.
I, I, I really like this view, Kristen. It's really helpful.
Good. All right. And this is just a graphical representation of our, and sorry, I don't know why the revenues and expenses didn't show up, but the blue is the revenues and the, uh, red is the expenses. We had a little bit of standout November's kind of, um, in audit of the expenses. We, that month, we had a, a three payroll month, so the expenses are higher that month. So that's, I think that makes up most of the, the extra expenses on this graph. And so that was pretty much it for the general fund. And then this is a summary of the enterprise funds. We have three different funds, basically. We have water and sewer, sanitation and stormwater. Again, this is just a summary of where their current budget is, um, current period, year-to-date actual, and where they are, uh, percent of their budget. So revenues were pretty much right on. And, um, storm wa- uh, with expenses, stormwater is a little bit, uh, the water and sewer and sanitation are pretty much in line with budget, but stormwater is a little bit down due to some, um, they, just some expenses that are coming in, in the spring. And so in, in payroll expenses, I believe are down, because there was a change in, um, staffing, so. And this slide is just a, a graph of the summary of the enterprise funds, revenue and expenses.
Yeah, uh, Mr. City Manager, could, could you and Kristen just look at, uh, November and December for the expenses through the enterprise funds? And, and give us a little update on that, maybe, uh, via email, just around what's driving the, the, the bump up in those expenses in the enterprise fund?
Sure.
That would be really helpful for, for me.
Gotcha.
It's really thorough, Kristen. I appreciate that feedback.
Oh, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thanks for counting all the chickens.
All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Good job.
Now we'll consider approving contract amendment number one to the Garber Master Agreement to include the Yukon Municipal Authority. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It was a tie, boys. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Tom Moore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Now we'll consider approving work order number two to the master agreement for professional services with Garber LLC in the total amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Tom Moore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Now we'll consider accepting the ARPA SL FRF grant administered through Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management for a fire training tower. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sean, you and your team have done a, a killer job on all the, all the grants, and this is just the icing on the cake. So great work to you and the whole team. Yes. Oh, yeah, Claudia definitely. Great. Thank you. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Tom Moore.
Yes.
Now we'll consider approving the bid and entering into a contract Lone Star Tactical Buildings LLC in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eleven cents, with reimbursement of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-seven cents from a Oklahoma Department of Ent- uh, Department of Emergency Management Grant. And consider approving Brewer Construction LLC to perform concrete work around the training facility in the amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand using the twenty twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving with Drainage, Water and Sewer Contract with the total project not to exceed six hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eleven cents. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Tom Moore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a, a discussion and possible action to direct staff to pursue additional funding opportunities through the Route sixty-six revitalization grant for the Route sixty-six downtown space. At this time, I'll open up discussion. Do I have any discussion here?
What are you thinking? We had one already and we were assured we would get it, and then we voted not to do it. So what are we thinking this time?
Yeah, I think the clarity that staff need is, is just to, um, to re, reaffirm, because we did that. We directed them not to pursue this a little bit prior to the current city manager and current city staff's, um, uh, current work. Um, so I'll make a motion that we direct city staff to not pursue this particular revitalization grant for this downtown space, um, and, uh, and to focus our opportunities elsewhere. Do I hear, uh, I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I think that's a bad idea, because Route sixty-six is in their centennial, and it's a chance for us to monopolize on people that come through our town.
I think it's a great opportunity for us to see what else we can do with it.
Yeah, it's a significant expenditure from the city and, you know, thinking about where a million dollars can go to revitalize Main Street. I think we can find some really great opportunities, uh, li- you know, in the, in the last few months of this fiscal year and into next year. I, I think we can, we can, uh, do a lot with a million dollars. Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Tom Moore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
No.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving ordinance number fourteen sixty-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, amending chapter two fifteen Unified Development Code, Article Five, General Development Standards, Section five oh six Outdoor Lighting, subsection B applicability and exemptions, amending the outdoor lighting exemptions, deleting or repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mitchell, you and the team have done a really great job of digging into all the ordinances and seeing where there's conflicts. And I appreciate the, the focus on consistency. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Tom Moore.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number fourteen sixty-nine. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Tom Moore.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving motion, uh, a motion approving ordinance number fourteen seventy, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, amending chapter two-ten Mobile Homes and Trailers, Article One, in general, section two-ten dash five, use of freestanding mobile home or travel trailer as a residence on track of five acres or more. Article three, mobile home, RV and travel trailer parks, division one generally, section two-ten dash one oh five, exterior, exterior. exterior, exterior lighting requirements, Division Two, Conditional Use Permit, amending various articles, sections to match the updated Unified Development Code, deleting or repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number fourteen seventy. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion approving an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners, Canadian County, and City of Yukon for the construction and paving of North Frisco Road within the city limits of the City of Yukon in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think this is gonna be a great project for.
Yeah, I, I especially want to thank our Canadian County Commissioners. I spoke with Tom Mansky last week, and we appreciate the partnership here. We look forward to, to doing even more partners, partnerships like this with neighboring cities and with our great county commissioners. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving an eight-inch sewer pipe bursting located at the alley between Ash Ave and Birch Ave, seven-ten to seven-thirteen Park Drive, uh, correct to Scrivener's error there, and three oh nine to three twenty-three Willow Place, to be completed by Brewer Construction LLC, uh, Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC using twenty twenty-three Concrete Asphalt Paving Drainage, Water, and Sewer Contract in the total amount of two hundred forty-four thousand, ninety-five dollars and thirty-seven cents, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, affirming compliance with federal immigration laws and executive orders. Uh, reading partially from this, um, "The City of Yukon shall cooperate with federal immigration authorities in the lawful enforcement of immigration laws to the extent permitted by federal and state law. This cooperation may include sharing information, responding to lawful detainer requests, and supporting law enforcement efforts as required by federal law. Uh, the City of Yukon shall fully comply with all federal immigration laws and executive orders, including but not limited to prohibiting the harboring or shielding of individuals unlawfully present in the United States." Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Can I ask why we're doing this? Don't we already comply with federal law?
I see it is, we're just confirming, unlike other cities, that we will be complying, where other cities are coming out saying they will not comply with federal law.
Right, that's a given, though. Are, are we gonna do it for all the laws? I just thought it was unusual that we would.
Yeah, I spent a little bit of time today reading, you know, a seventy-year-old Immigration and Naturalization Act that the U.S. Congress passed, um, and I think it was in nineteen fifty-two that this was passed and, and amended since then. And I was shocked at the plain language that's present in such act under our federal government, and it's just plain clear to me that this was not followed under the prior federal administration, and now it's being followed. And we, as a city, need to do our, our part, you know, to assist what our federal government is doing um, to lawfully enforce laws that are already on our books, already, just like we look at our ordinances as a city. We also look at our state laws in conjunction with our state law enforcement authorities, and we also look at the federal laws that, that govern our entire nation.
Well, I'm in support of it, because it ensures that Yukon's gonna uphold federal immigration laws, support our law enforcement, protect our residents. Um, Yukon's not a sanctuary city. We're not gonna be, and, uh, we will not obstruct lawful enforcement of this.
But I, I just feel like we already comply with federal law, and that unless we're gonna start doing that.
There's a lot of cities that don't.
Right, but we do, and I just don't see.
That we do.
Okay, I don't see that that's a city thing to do. I think it's federal law. We fall under federal law. We don't have the, the right as a city to not comply with federal law.
I, I would agree, and we're, we're saying we don't, we're gonna follow it. Where there's numerous other cities that have said they're not, they're gonna break the laws. We're gonna confirm to our citizens that we will follow that.
Sounds like we're in agreement there.
I'm in agreement. I just don't feel like we need a resolution doing that. I think that we're taking a stance that we don't have a right to take money. It's federal. So let's vote.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Oh.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, directing the city manager to prepare and issue a request for qualific- request of qualifications for engineering services for the City of Yukon and Yukon Municipal Authority, including a pre-bid meeting and a bid submission deadline of June the first, twenty twenty-five, with engineering engagement to commence on July the first, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, authorizing the engagement of Yenzor Consulting Services to conduct a limited scope review of payroll as a follow-up to the forensic review of municipal finances. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, is there any new business?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the floor for each council person to say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognitions, and et cetera, and is not intended for the conduct of city business by members of the public body. Councilmember Selby.
Yes, I want to tell you all to be very safe. If you don't have to get out tomorrow, please stay home and stay warm, stay safe. Trash was not picked up today. Do we know when it's going to be picked up?
We picked most of it up today. Uh, after we finish tomorrow's route, we will try to finish up.
Get those in Parkland? Okay, people in Parkland, my ward, you'll be picked up tomorrow.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Uh, yeah, it's, I just reiterate, it's, it's cold the next couple of days. Be smart out there.
Councilmember Shriver.
I'd like to recognize the sanitation department for being out today. I run a route. It's awful out there. The roads are horrible. Um, they weren't off.
I know, that's what I thought the thing said. I thought nobody.
No, they weren't off. They worked until the dump closed them, correct? And then they shut them down from there, so, and, um, y'all dress warm, bundle up out there. Those working outside and all stuff.
Vice Mayor Wooten.
Great job. Chiefs, great job having your people out there at all times. Doesn't matter the weather, you do your jobs. Uh, city manager, were we the only city that stayed open in this area?
I don't have nearly enough information. One of our cities to the south was, was closed today.
I heard the city of the south closed after an hour's worth of work, so good job to you and your, and your group.
Some upcoming events here in Yukon. Kids Trout Fish Out. I saw the invoice and our payment for all the fish that got put in that, or are going to be put in that pond. Welch Park Pond, Saturday, March the first, eight AM to eleven AM. It's free, no registration required. I know Adam's gonna be there. I'm definitely gonna be there. It was crowded last year, so hopefully we'll get some fish out of that, out of that lake. Uh, Taste of Yukon, Thursday, May, March the twentieth, five thirty PM to seven thirty PM, held at the Dale Robertson Center. Advanced tickets are twelve dollars for ages nine and up, ten dollars for ages eight and younger. Uh, day of tickets, fifteen dollars and twelve dollars respectively. Um, taste, the, the food samples come from over twenty local restaurants. And lastly, uh, this Sunday, uh, councilmember Selby will be holding, uh, Jacob's Moxie with Jacob's Cupboard. Uh, great fundraiser. It'll be held at Vodka Coffee House. Um, I attended last year. Great time. Uh, maybe I'll get a little bit of cake this year.
Yes, four to six, we'll have cake. Brandon Wilson is gonna be our music.
Uh, music, live music as well. So four to six PM on Sunday. I want to thank all the city staff, especially the staff members that stayed so late this evening to get the ci- the, the people's business done. The updates from city staff were extensive. I really thank you all, and thanks, thanks, thanks to your work. We're continuing to move forward. Um, if we can do anything to help, please don't, don't hesitate to shout, and be safe on your drive home. Thank you all.